Good morning. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for September 26th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted. That was a little too quick. Okay, unless administratively wrong direction. Okay. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first before they provide their point. In the interest of time and to ensure you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call upon you at the appropriate time. Okay. Mr. Stembridge?
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Berberaza.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Collins.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. I will turn it over to Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with the extension of the schedule for 9:00 AM. We have two companion cases, first being case BOA 122-8408 with the address of 69 Reedville Street. Along with that, we have companion case BOA 122-8404 with the address of 71 Reedville Street. This is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension until October 8th, 2024. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Just a second.
Is that your call? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm present. Yeah, I'm present.
Would you go? Please proceed to explain your request.
Absolutely. Diagnosed with colon cancer and I was recovering from surgery over the last two years, that's the primary reason. And now that I'm fully healed, I just needed a bit more time to get everything going, so...
All right, thank you, understood. May I have a motion?
Motion to extend to October 8th, 2024.
Thank you.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Next, we have case BOA 948-370 with the address of 768 to 772 Tremont Street. The release of spot fired for this on January 17th of this year. However, this is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Stembridge, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, my client is Dr. Usama Al Khatib, who owns the building at this location as well as the dental practice there. His application, which was approved, was to change the legal occupancy of the building from dental offices to apartments and a restaurant with takeouts to dental offices, six apartments, a restaurant with takeout. It would be a two-story vertical addition. As I said, my client was approved. This matter was told during the pandemic, but during the period of COVID, my client, who is a dentist, maintains his practice here, was a bit overwhelmed with trying to maintain treating his patients and to keep his practice going. He contacted me a couple of weeks ago and inquired about this. I described to him that this would be a discretionary matter for the board, but he did ask that the extension request be made in order that he now may focus on completing the project.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
We need a date. September 26th, 2024.
Okay.
That will be perfect, thank you.
Motion to extend to September 26th, 2024.
May I have a second? Thank you. Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 103-5621 with the address of 3 Robinson Street. This is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension until October 8th, 2024. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes.
Would you go ahead? Would you explain the situation to us, please?
Yes, I had a death in the family and my father died of stroke, so we've been back and forth with medical issues. Finally, the Boston Water approved the plan and we're ready to proceed with the work. Actually, the work is being done tomorrow, you know, for to bring the water into the building. So I need a little more time after the water's been brought into the building to finish some touch-up stuff.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to extend to October 8th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 874-954 with the address of 303 to 305 Bennington Street. This is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension until October 17th, 2024. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mary Kay Campbell with the law firm Drago and Toscano at 11 Beacon Street. We are requesting a one-year extension on behalf of our client. Took him a while to finalize financing for the project and to finish building drawings, but he is still intending to move forward with the project.
Any questions from the board?
When does he hope to start construction?
He is currently estimating within approximately nine months.
Motion to extend to October 17th, 2024. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have two companion cases. The first is case BOA 992-109 with the address being 24 Rand Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 992-105 with the address being 28 Rand Street. The release expired on March 13th of this year. However, this is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes.
Yes, would you explain your request, please?
Yes, hi, Kenneth D'Abbo, 21 Rand Street. Well, we've lived in the area since the 70s. I grew up there. And my dad's 88 now and his wife is 84. And I'm kind of, we're all taking care of him right now, but we made it through COVID and then I've been looking for the prices and they went sky high. And we received some prices from the contractors, was a third more. And then all of a sudden, the interest rates. So I'm looking for an extension to continue the process of building these homes for our family to live in without getting priced out of the area. We lived here, like I said, since the 70s. We own the land, we work in the city. Please consider our extension. I'm sorry, I didn't, I thought it was two years, the date, I thought it was to October and I missed it. I'm sorry for that. I'm probably going to sit down with Dudley Street Initiative or the city and see if there's any programs out there to help us with this.
Understood. Thank you, sir. May I have a motion?
I'm motion to extend to September 26th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 985-935-935. The address is 705 VFW Parkway. The release expired on March 13th of this year. This is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes.
Will you proceed?
Would you explain to us?
Explain your need for the extension, please.
Yes, my name's Gary Martel. I'm here on behalf of the Nassif brothers. There's four brothers that have owned the gas station and service repair facility at 705 VFW Parkway for the last 30 years. In COVID years, 2019, they got approval for a one-story bay that's approximately 16 by 32 to add on to their existing structure to put a mass inspection bay. Of course, like a lot of the other applicants today, this is a, this is a family that works the business. They have another business in Denham. COVID issues, interest rates, all the above time, but so they're looking for an extension and they are ready to put the addition on now. I happen to get my car repaired there and they know I do permitting stuff, so I'm here to help them. And I'm also, one of the issues has been getting subcontractors and architects and stuff, so I'm going to step in and help them to get this one-story addition on the building. And they're respectfully asking the board for an extension today if you could.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the extension to September 26th, 2024.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have two more companion cases, the first being case BOA 609-358 with the address of 628 Parsons Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 609-355 with the address being 10 Parsons Street. This is the applicant's third request for a one-year extension until October 4th, 2024. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCasse, LaCasse Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant. This project is a 54-unit new building on Washington Street and Parsons Street in Brighton, and we are hopefully nearing completion of our BPDA design review process. There was a change in architects and most recently, there was a retirement at BPDA of our design reviewer and a reassignment, so we're just wrapping up that process and then we'll advance it to final permitting at ISD and get this project underway. It did suffer from a Nabutter challenge earlier on in the process, which lasted two years in Superior Court. And then, once that concluded COVID, but we have been diligently pursuing our final approvals with the BPDA and hope to be able to start as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. LaCasse. Any questions from the board?
When do you hope to start construction?
I would say that if we can complete the design review process, the first or second quarter of 2024.
Thank you.
May I have a motion?
Motion to grant the extension until October 4th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Finally, we have the last two cases, which are companion cases, the first being case BOA 754-380 with the address of 55 to 57 Brumman Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 754-388 with the address of 63 to 69 Brumman Street. This is the applicant's fourth request for a one-year extension until October 11th, 2024. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Stembridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is attorney Justin Burns of Pulgenia Norton, business address 10 Forbes Road, Braintree, Mass. I'm here on behalf of Park Street School requesting a one-year extension to the written decisions. These approvals were initially entered into ISD on October 11th, 2019. Shortly thereafter, the applicant was sued by Nabutter, which was the reason for the prior extensions. The school is happy to report that the lawsuit has recently settled, but they now need time to finalize construction documents with ISD as they've been unable to move forward with the process during litigation. And they also need time to complete a capital fundraising campaign. As a result, we are respectfully requesting a one-year extension so that the school can bring these long-delayed projects to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the extension to October 11th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll move on to the board final architecture case, the 930. The case, this is case BOA 135-8847 with the address of 2 Wombek Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
Yes, I am.
Please proceed, Mr. Pratt.
My name is Hesekiah Pratt. I am the architect for the project. Reason why we're here is because we made several changes to the approved plans by the board. Those changes were made for several reasons. One, during the design review with Boston Plant and Development Agency, they suggested changes to the front of the building, that is, access not from Wombek, but also they would like access from Elm Hill, so they made changes there. The other changes, there were two other changes. One is that originally this building had bay windows on the first floor, which we did not submit on the original application. The BPDA planner requested, we put those two bays back, in which we did. He also suggested, we thought were really good, changes to the third floor, that is, the third floor made substantial changes to the men's hall roof there as well, which we thought improved the design substantially. There is a structure on the back of the building. We reduced the height of that, which is part of an improvement. The owner also, the owner requested decks on the upper floor, so we added new decks, two decks. Those decks are accessible only by the third floor apartment owners, I'm sorry, residents. So that completes, we believe, substantial changes to the plans. In summary, those changes do not add any additional violations to which we were previously approved.
Questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I'd like to hear BPDA's recommendation for the project.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We usually don't make recommendations on board final orders, but, you know, a couple of the changes were done at the request of the BPDA Urban Design Department.
Right. Okay, the only feedback I kind of needed was, I understand that the main building entrance was recommended to be on, from Elm Street, but there is now kind of a larger projection to the front yard, and I just wanted to understand whether those recommendations were, you know, going beyond, onto the front yard. So the applicant just mentioned that there's no further violations?
Right, as Mr. Pratt stated, I don't think ISD would allow this to come before the board if there were additional violations. It would have to have a new hearing.
Okay. No further questions?
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, since there are no further violations with this request, I'm going to put a motion forward for approval.
May I have a second?
With BPDA, oops, with BPDA design review.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, the 930, we have two G-Cod and building code cases, which are companion cases. The first is case BOA 151-8865 with the address of 389 Marlborough Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 151-8866 with the address also 389 Marlborough Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
I am.
Yes, please proceed.
Hi, my name is Bob Palladino. I am the architect working on this project at 389 Marlborough Street. And I think we're before you for a couple of items. One is for the G-Cod applicability, and I think you have letters from the Boston Water and Sewer and also the No Harm letter from the civil engineer. And the other, and I don't know how you want to do this, if you want to do this one at a time or both, would you like me to describe both items?
Yes, you can proceed with both.
And the other one was that there's a roof deck, there's a, we're proposing a roof deck, and we originally proposed a hatch, a roof hatch, to gain access to the deck. It was denied by the building department as a violation of the building code, so now we are proposing a head house in its place. So that's something that needs your approval.
Okay, questions from the board?
No further questions.
Okay. Hearing none, is there, was Mr. Semenelli on, just to confirm the G-Cod?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, hearing no other questions, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval for G-Cod and to provide building code relief.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the hearings scheduled for 9:30. We have, next, we have case BOA.
You want to ask about, Mr. Stembridge, about deferrals or withdrawals?
Thank you for that reminder. At this time, going into 9:30 with 9:30 hearings, do we have any requests for any deferrals or withdrawals for this time? With that, we'll move on to case BOA 151-4330 with the address being 21 Holson Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of my client, Wesley Here on behalf of my client Wesley Long, and I also have Chris Drew, who's the architect on the proposal. What you're looking at in this photo, this rendering, is a rendering of the proposed project. And what we're proposing under the new plan is to change the occupancy from an existing three-unit building to a five-unit condominium building. To renovate the existing dwelling and to erect three-story additions for a total of five units with nine rear parking spaces that would be accessed through an existing driveway. Just by, if we go to the next slide, please, Jessica. Just so folks can see, so that the group can see, when we started this process, we were at a much different project as we worked through the community process. We started at nine units and we were proposing to raise the building. Three things that we heard from the neighborhood was that was too many units that they wanted to preserve and keep the building and that we needed to maintain parking on the site. And if you look at the building directly to the left of us, that is a condominium building, a 46-unit building directly next to us. Even though this district is a 3F 4,000, our lot is 10,619 square feet, and there are multiple multifamily residential uses right in this immediate area. As we, you can go to the next slide, please. And this just gives you an aerial view. So you can see where the yellow arrow is, is the existing structure on the lot. Condo building to the left of us, multifamily residential to down from that. And you can see some of the new construction as you go around the corner. The church a few down from us on the other corner. As we went through the community process, we were actually able to eliminate all of the dimensional violations. We eliminated parking, we, I'm sorry, we eliminated additional lot area, open space, and FAR. The only violation that we have existing is for the MFR use that we're seeking relief for. If we go to the next slide, please. And this, these are just some rendering. So we, Chris worked to keep this building intact, renovate and keep it to fit within the context of the existing structures around the area, but also make this a condo building and add some additional housing as well. We also put a landscape plant together for all of the front yard and the rear yard as well. If we could go to the next slide, please. And that's looking at the, the structure from another angle on the right side. All of these units are three-bedroom, family-sized units. Unit one is 1,030 square feet. Unit two is 1,156 square feet. Unit three is 1,267. Unit four is 1,304. And then unit five is 2,171 square feet. So all three-bedroom, two-bath, family-sized units. Next slide, please. And this is just, we're getting into the site plan now. So you can just see the size of the lot. If we go to the next slide, please. And that's our site plan. So it does show the parking in the rear. Most of the spaces are, six of them are full-size spaces and three are compact off to the side. We were actually also able to eliminate the open space violation as we reduced unit count and size of the building as well. With that, and we worked with the ACA and the BAIA for the design that we see today as well. I can pause to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Drago. Questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I'd like to hear BTD's recommendation and also BPDA's.
Is Mr. D'Amico with us? Okay, we'll have Mr. Hampton. Are you with us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We recommend, recommended denial without prejudice. If you read our recommendation, it was, there was some concern about the usable open space and tree canopies, the elimination of mature trees. Also, the design in the back of the rear overhang was not something that we were in favor of. So that's why we recommended denial without prejudice.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
First, Mr. D'Amico is, he said that, sorry, he's requesting, he requested a removal of 17-foot-by-18-foot space and 18-by-5-foot and 20, 20-foot space for adequate maneuverability. Secondly, how many units do we wind up with for the units themselves and parking spaces?
These are five units with nine parking spaces. We started out at nine units, worked with the community to keep the building as is, which added more green space. If we can go to the site, and I can turn it over to Chris Drew to talk a little bit about the back of the building as well. But, and so parking was the number-two issue that we had heard from the community. We'd be happy to continue to work reducing that. But again, as we went through this process, it was, it was parking and then the unit counts. We brought down that unit count, which right next to us has a six-unit building as well. But we also have a lot of green space in the front. Chris, I know he's on the call. If you could touch upon the, the tree issue too, because I know that just.
Also, can, can you comment on what is the minimum amount of parking space you feel that would still provide by building for the project?
By zoning, it's 1.75 per unit, which is 8.75 required.
That's what was required under the code, is 8.75.
Yeah, no, I understand that. But BPDA's recommendation or issue with the project was that there was an extraordinary amount of parking and you were losing open space and mature trees. So, you know, because you're requesting for increased density, the question is, what is, what do you feel is the most efficient use of parking space?
I think if, you know, if we had, you know, six, which would be, you know, one per unit and then an additional spot, you know, for visitor parking, I think for us that would be fine. Obviously, the community pushed us on parking as well. The curb cut and the driveway are existing on site, so we're not adding anything. Chris, can you just talk about the tree canopy? Because I know that's.
Because it wasn't an existing tree in the front that was taken down a couple of years ago, I guess. By looking, by looking about, the tree was unhealthy or whatever prior to us really starting this project. The intention, if you go back to the landscape plan for a second, there is a large tree, kind of, and actually you can see it in the rendering. That large tree kind of in the back right corner will remain. And that kind of part of the way that we designed the parking was to be able to maintain that tree as well.
I mean, we worked with the BAIA, the ACA, and the abutters for about almost a year and a half to two years on the project to get here. We'd be happy to obviously redesign a parking plan. We felt, and given that we're keeping the building and we maintained, even though we have some green space in the back, we have a large green space area in the front, which I know is important, folks, as well.
How much parking was originally in your project when it was a nine-unit project?
So we had 10 spaces at one point. But people felt that that was, the parking count wasn't close to what would be needed for the area.
And that was also a different building too. I mean, you know, the orientation and everything else was different at that point.
I assume it's resident parking, so people can get permits and park on the street?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I feel like one-for-one seems appropriate for this project and the fact that there's resident parking, so only residents can park on this street. Yeah, if you reduce the parking, could you bring that building down to the ground? Would you make that design change?
Maybe we could certainly look at it with BP, with BPDA. But it's all around maneuverability and all that. So if we can make it work with maneuverability, I think absolutely. But it's just, you know, if you can go back to the landscape plan for a second. Keep going, a little more. Yeah, I'll start the other way. Right, yeah, I mean, just, yeah, right there. So as you can see, like, the red line itself, that's the setback, the red line setback. You can see the cantilever, the next line down, which is kind of like black, dash, black line. Of course, you know, we need to have maneuverability. If there's a way that we can, you know, do something different with that, to be able to get that down, still get the parking and get maneuverability, I think our team would absolutely, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think this, yeah, to me, the six spaces in the back should be adequate. And, and it sounds like the BPDA is recommending that that building not be cantilevered. And, but I would leave that to the architects to determine and maneuverability.
And the big reason is we're trying to make sure we can keep, we wanted to keep that building. It was very important to the community. And then build on it to get some extra units. But we'd be happy to, to work with the zoning board and the BPDA to reduce parking.
Yeah, and so, and potentially increase the green space by pulling that in as well, the paved area in.
But if you can see, Ms. Panado, so we keep the trees along that corner and in the back. So that's, we really designed this to keep the trees, to keep the building, but also work with the community on a reasonable parking count.
So how many large trees will you have to remove for this plan to work?
I believe there's only, there'll only really be one that is kind of like, you know, left, left side of the parking area, kind of in the middle. But everything, everything else is mostly, you know, along the right, the upper right corner of the, of the lot itself. And obviously, we would be adding, you know, some more tiny things and all of this stuff to the, to the design as well.
Mr. Drago, can you confirm, you mentioned it's residential parking. Is there residential parking on both sides of the street or is it just one side?
Don't know. Chris, do you know the answer to that?
No, I'm not sure.
I know it's on one side. Not sure it's on the other. I know it's on the side in front of our building. I just don't think there's, I don't see the signs, but yeah, that I don't know, Madam Chair.
Under the current iteration, how are the, or how would the parking spaces be designated or assigned to each unit? You know, assuming, are they sold with the deed to each unit? How?
So, Ms. Weewell, it would be a first come, basically, first served. They would come with the unit. And then when those unit spaces have already been deeded, there would be, you know, folks that would be buying other units probably wouldn't, you know, obviously, they wouldn't get a space, but, or they would need a space. They wouldn't have a cop, but all of the spaces.
Could one unit hypothetically purchase three spaces?
I'm sorry?
Could one unit hypothetically purchase three?
That, that wouldn't be the goal. The goal would be to get one, you know, per, and then normally, that's how we would handle it. And then, you know, whatever's left, you know, they wouldn't use. But some folks come and may not have a space or something like that, or need a space. But they definitely would go with the units. They wouldn't be sold separately or they would be leased out or anything.
Are there any other questions from the board? I want to maybe take a pause and go through public testimony because it does look like there are residents and parking is always an issue. And I'd just like to hear from abutters on that issue before we proceed. Any other questions from the board? Okay, can we take public testimony, Jessica?
Okay, start with Tony and then go to Maura. Oh, I'm sorry, ONS, I apologize, if you want.
No worries. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Austin Brighton Liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the judgment of the board in this case. But at the last abutters meeting, some of the concerns of the abutters present centered around the density, the character of the building relating to the character of the neighborhood as well as parking. The Austin Civic Association did send in a letter earlier this morning. They are split down the middle between support and opposition among their membership. With that said, we will defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony? Are any of the elected officials on? I just want to make sure, any of the elected official offices? No, okay, sorry, go ahead, Tony.
Yeah. Good morning, everyone. Madam Chair, members of the board, Tony Disidora representing the Austin Civic Association. First, I want to do respect to Mr. Drago. I think we need to do a little fact-checking. I, according to the deed, I think Mr. Drago undersized the, the site by about 5,000 square feet. That's according to the deed. And all due respect, this is the first time we have heard that this is now a condominium project. We, we always was presenting that it was a rental project. And now I'm finding out just now that it's a condo project. And I'm more than certain, Mr. Drago cites the project right next door as a condo project. I believe that's a rental project. I don't believe that's a condominium project. So on those three points, the facts don't seem to be correct. But yes, Madam Chair, we, we did split right down the middle. It's important to say that we got a number of votes from both sides, from residents who live in that neighborhood or who are direct abutters to the neighborhood. Those who approve the proposal like the fact that, as you know, there was a lot of discussion about tearing down the structure. And given the historical nature of the neighborhood, there was a lot of pushback on that, including from the Brighton-Austin Historical Society. So they like the fact that the proponent decided to keep the building and add on to it. And they feel the design assimilates fairly well into the existing neighborhood. Those who oppose the project, site density and the trade-offs that the board was just talking about, the fact that you have a very large, we were quoted initially 2,200-square-foot top unit, which was unit five, which in our neighborhood can spell a lot of trouble. And you've addressed the, a number of people actually oppose the project because of the generous parking ratio that was proposed. So therefore, the fact that we split dead even between yes and no, we're going to defer a judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I answer, I mean, because my name is.
Understood, but can we go through the testimony? Then you'll have an opportunity.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Maura, Maura?
Is someone from Council Brayden's office on?
Maura, go ahead. I don't know, she jumped off. I'll, I'll go to Annabella and try to get back to her. Annabella, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabella Gompson of the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record and support. We supported the project because they are keeping the house and the architecture is with, with the neighborhood. So we do respect that. We do like the, the fact that it is homeownership. We do want to support that. And we do think that the parking has been called by a lot of the neighbors as important. And we do feel that parking is important when selling a condo as well. So we'd like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Try to get back to Maura. And maybe Jeff Allen, if you could unmute yourself.
Good morning, sorry about that. Good morning, this is Maura McCray from Council Brayden's office. The council would like to go on record and support this project. She appreciates the retention of the existing building. She also, our offices, our understanding is that this project does, is a condo project. If Mr. Drago could confirm that, we'd appreciate that. She would also like, she was concerned about, as the board has discussed, the paving, the issue of paving over the majority of the backyard. So council would like the board to consider adding on a proviso to, for some sort of site review for the reduction of parking and a requirement for permeable payers. Thank you.
Sal?
Hello, yes, I live across the street, I'm on across the street of Abutter. There's five houses on this block. So far, you've, there's five houses, four of them are rental property owned by absentee landlords. So far, you've given two of them, variants to go multifamily. This would be the third, which means it'll only be a matter of time before the fourth and every other absentee landlord in the neighborhood comes in to become multifamily. Couple of weeks ago, the city issued its report, reforming the Boston zoning code. The page nine, it states, to receive a, quote, "To receive a variance, the property owner must meet the high bar set by the code, proving special circumstances and practical difficulty and demonstrating substantial hardship," close quotation mark. You spend all your time looking. You spend all your time looking at the design, and not one piece of evidence ever gives, satisfies the criteria for variance, either the prior two, or this, 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 this property has no business being a variance, just like everything else, it's going to be filled up full of students and professionals, the parties start on Thursday night, they go to Saturday night, there's only parking on one side of the street, and it's full. This report, there was issue just a couple of weeks ago, confirms what was issued back in January by Suffolk University, when they studied the variance procedure, and they said it, page 447, quote, "We also find, looking at the substance of these decisions, that little attention is given to the legal requirements for variance."
Sir, can you focus on your, your specific reasons for, for opposition, which clearly you're opposed?
Well, my specific reason for opposition is the lack of any legal basis for this variance, just like the other two, in your own reports, issued by the city, issued by Suffolk University, and by the.
Thank you.
I try to have no additional reasons.
Okay, Mr. Drago, do you want to respond?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, so respectfully to Mr. Tizadoro, the lot is 10,619 square feet, some of the larger lots in the area, we had a survey done, it's also, the board could simply look at assessing online, and BPDA zoning bureau, which I'll show that number. The building, it was mentioned that condos are not mentioned, we have always, my client only develops condominiums, he's from Brighton, he lives in Brighton, so this would be a condominium project. I apologize if I had mentioned the building to the left of us, being condo, I thought it was, I know it's multifamily residential, six-unit development, so, but as we went through this process and met with the ACA at our last meeting, as well as our last Butter meeting, there was not one negative comment that we heard, folks were happy with the design, folks were happy that we were keeping the building, asked us to maintain the green space in the front, the trees in the back, and that is why we moved forward, so this project will be committed to be a condo project, it creates two additional units, and again, another thing that we hear consistently in Austin Brighton is to make sure that these aren't just studio or one bedrooms, that these are family-sized units, which is exactly what we were proposing on these condos, so that families could actually purchase these and, and live in them for a period of time, or for, you know, for, as their family grows.
Thank you. Any, any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with four provisos, one being that the project uses permeable materials for the driveway, second is that the project has only five parking spaces, third is to replant new trees for every mature tree loss, and fourth is to undergo BPDA design review for site planning, to maximize open space, and to review the rear massing of the building, to work with maneuverability of the cars.
Second? Stenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have case, it's BOA 148909, the address being 821 Cummins Highway, is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Caesar should be on, Caesar?
Okay, thank you. Am I on now?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Caesar De Silva, the architect on this project, I'm here on behalf of representing Mr. George Lopes, the owner of this funeral home at 821 Cummins Highway. The objective of this project is to build a garage rear addition, due to the fact that right now, we are bringing, I mean, the funeral home brings in the, the bodies in or out to the driveway, which is usually now exposed. The objective is to build this garage so we can bring in or transport the bodies in enclosed, in a private manner, not exposed to the outside. We have met with the neighborhood, and I believe we have majority support, and we would like to have your support as well. What brings us before you is the variances on the zoning violations of extension of non-conforming use, floor area ratio excessive, and dimension regulations, and we would like to have your support on these variances, so we can best serve the community, thank you.
Thank you, any questions from the board?
On your site plan, I can't see the curb cut to access the garage, is the curb cut existing?
No, I believe there will be, hold on a second, there will be curb cut on that side, on the driveway.
Okay, so the curb cut would be just Hollingsworth Street, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's three feet from the nearby property?
Yes, actually, Mr. Lopes owns that property as well.
Okay, no, no further questions?
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Does the, I, I know there's an open space issue here, is there ability for that garage to be a little smaller than it is, it looks like a fairly large garage?
Actually, it's to best serve to have at least two cars coming in, because there is an access home within the garage, actually, one car, if we see, excuse me, it's 20 feet, the garage, but there is a door in the deck that is served for, you know, delivery of flowers and things, that's why we needed that space for the ample, let's say, the, the cars, or that transports the coffins to be maneuvered freely, so that's why we extended that, to have the deck that's inside, and the garage as well.
Yeah, can we hear from the BPDA on this? Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, we agree with you, Ms. Panato, that the addition is just too big for us, especially with, I understand now that the owner of the funeral home owns the, the property where there is a three-foot setback, but we feel that the addition is too big, therefore, we recommended denial of this project, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Can I come in here, is there a way of working with BPDA and shrinking the garage another two or three feet? The neighborhood, we met with the neighborhood, it seems like they were actually in support because we are bringing the bodies exposed to the weather, they would like to see a more private way of bringing in the bodies, so if we could work with BPDA on shrinking the garage a little bit, we would, we would to do that so.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
There's, your, your, your main entry is on Cummins Highway, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
What is, what is the use to the rear that would be most impacted by the three-foot Is it a single-family or multifamily residential?
Yes, there is actually a two-family residential that Mr. Lopes owns, but the rest, it's actually all like residential area in the, in the back, so putting a garage there would best serve the community, and the business as well, so we don't continue to bring and expose the bodies on the driveway.
And your driveway is only one story high?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. May we have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Eric James from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, I am going to go ahead and let you guys know right now, there is a good amount, so I apologize in advance for the lacking testimony. The Butters meeting, so the applicant for 821 Cummins Highway met with the Butters on November 16, 2022, the residents and attendants voiced the following concern, so the residents would like a formal inspection done, if something happens to their property, they would like to have a baseline to say that they were affected due to the construction. The residents also voiced concerns that the construction itself will cause the same adverse effects on the community as the Cody Village construction, which residents have stated that that construction invited rodents into their homes, so they would like that to be cited as well. In terms of the associations that were met, they were asked to meet with the Woodhaven-Coburt Regis Neighborhood Association, but at the time, the Woodhaven-Coburt Regis Neighborhood Association was the only neighborhood association that represented that catchment area. Recently, the Cummins Highway Neighborhood Association has been formed about two months ago, and that would be the neighborhood association that has the most deference. They met with the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council, the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council is recommending the following, so they are requesting that a construction management plan be shared with the residents prior to the actual construction, they would like detailed follow-up on construction management plan, they would like the applicants to take pictures and videos of all the residents' property to, prior to construction, and send those videos to the mayor's office for storage, they would like formal inspection of the site prior to demolition and construction, they would like to be routinely inspected and cleaned for rodent control, this is due to the close proximity of the homes on Hollingsworth Street, they would also like it to be subject to a review by the BTD for the parking space and the garage. In terms of the Cummins Highway Neighborhood Association, the Hollingsworth Street captains do not approve this project at this time, as you, as you know, the project does border Hollingsworth Street, so they stated that they did not receive any communication or notification about this project, even though they live on the street, and they also would like the C, the CNA, the Cummins Highway Neighborhood Association would like the applicants to defer to come back to present to the Cummins Highway Neighborhood Association, which they were not instructed to do during their initial community process. The Cummins Highway Neighborhood Association is a fairly new neighborhood association, however, again, they do cover this area of Matapan that is largely uncovered by the other neighborhood associations, so due to this, moving forward, ONS will recommend that projects within this catchment area be referred to the CNA, so they would like this applicant to defer to present to their board, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, George? We're going to get testimony here?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, can you state your name and address, and briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition for the proposal?
Is that Mr. Lopes, the applicant?
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Need to add anything else?
Well, can we listen to public testimony first?
Yeah, I have no additional raise hands.
Okay. Anything you wish to respond to, Mr. De Silva, before we proceed?
Um, I believe that this particular, just one floor addition, it actually helps or assists the community with better serving the community by not exposing the bodies to the outside. I actually threw the meeting before with Mr. James, and we thought that the neighborhood was actually in supportive of this, is to.
Okay, well, we, we've heard otherwise, so, okay, any, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll put forward a motion to deny without prejudice, it sounds like there's some redesign that, that could happen to this project, and certainly some more community process.
May I have a second?
Sorry.
Mr. Stenberg?
Yeah.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Next case?
Next, we have case BOA 1494349, the address of Two Dexter Row, is the applicant and/or their representative present?
I'm listening, are you on, can you raise your hand?
Are you presenting? Um, Mr. Santinello from Spencer Sullivan, vote the architect will present.
I just made him a panelist, can you unmute yourself, SBS?
Are you present, Mr. Santinello?
Uh, man?
Yes, thank you, are you ready to present?
No, no, sorry, this is Jerry, so I'm waiting for my colleague to, to join us in the other room here.
Now I was able to unmute. I have, yeah, I was, I have a problem. Okay, this project is an addition and renovation of an existing structure at Two Dexter Row, you can see in the plot plan, and, and existing addition exists in the back that will be demolished, and where there is a red footprint is the proposed addition. Here we have photographs of the, the locus, the locus of the, the project, the project essentially is in the backyard of Two Dexter Row, in two the north, so that the addition will not shade very much at all, because it will be in the shade of the existing row I, I don't have control of this, I suppose we can move to the next, to, continue, please, continue, we've done an energy analysis here, this is, we have, we are within the FRA at 1.98, we do need a, a variance with the building height of, of, just a slight bit from two, we are at, currently at 36 feet six for the addition height. Can we have the next slide, please? This shows the, the existing conditions with the addition on the back, perhaps we could go to the next slide. Here you see the addition, on the bottom left is the old addition to be demolished with, with this headhouse out from the basement, and up in the top center is an X, a 3D axon metric of the proposed addition. And on the bottom right is also a proposed, the axon of the proposed addition. More, again, please, move, that's not important, here are demolition plans of, of the existing addition, in our proposed addition, we will have a storage minimum height basement that will be for storage only. Next slide, please? Continue? Thank you. Continue? That shows the, the demolition, continue, please? Okay, and these are our proposed, this is, these are our proposed plans for Two Dexter Row, this shows the basement that's storage only, but that does have egress out. The next slide, please? Here are the floors above, the, the floor on the, below is the second floor, and the first floor is above that, and it shows an expansion and renovation of the interior of the existing building for multifamily. On the third floor, there is a proposed deck on the, above the addition, so that the most furthest south part of the addition is, is a two-story building with a deck on, on the third. on the third. And on the fourth floor underneath is, uh, a small deck to access the required egress, egress stair, the new egress stair. And next, please? Thank you. Exterior elevation, so showing, uh, the building height calculation and essentially, um, this is an in-progress set. This set is dated a, a bit before us, but we have developed some elevations on this since this process. Next slide, please? This, this is the same circumstance, this shows the, uh, required eager breast stair out of the building, in section. Can we show the next slide, please? Is that the last one? Okay, so, you know, this is, this is the I S D set that was presented, um, a while back, um, and are there any questions?
Thank you, are there questions from the board?
Can you please comment on the exterior material on the rear? And then what is your proposed material?
Okay, we are, um, going to use brick, full brick, um, and in some spots, uh, precast, or, for instance, window sills or headers over windows, and we will have, um, a wrought iron, I, or, or some kind of guard rail of the, um, the deck, the roof deck. We will also be having some corbeling and some accents with, that are traditional to , uh, New England and especially Charleston for the cornices, and, um, we're trying hard to be respectful for the, to the neighboring community.
Is there a reason why we're not seeing that many windows on the exterior?
It's because this is an earlier set, unfortunately,
Okay.
this, this set is not the most, um, advanced.
Okay, thank you, enough for the questions.
Thank you, other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a public testimony?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Breen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting for Two Dexter Row was held on August seventeenth. Uh, abutters had concerns about the height of the structure possibly obstructing their views. Uh, since that time, this office has received zero letters in support and zero in opposition. Uh, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Breen?
I have no additional raised hands.
Right, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with, uh, two provizals, that the plans be reviewed by the Department of Parks and Recreation, and that the project undergo B P A design review, paying special attention to the historical detail of its context, uh, massing and design of the headhouse.
May I have a second? Mr. Stenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one five zero seven eight one eight with the address of one twenty Saint Andrew Road. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
Uh, yes, uh, it's me again, Caesar De Silva, the architect, uh, for this project. Um, come before you, hello, uh, good morning again, uh, Madam Chair and members of the board. Um, our, um, I'm here, uh, my name is Caesar De Silva, the architect representing Mr., um, Raúl Gómez Alves, on changing occupancy from one family and building a two-story addition and extension on this existing house at, um, one twenty Saint Andrews Street. If you see this particular project here, this, the existing house is very small and out of the character with the rest of the neighborhood. Uh, most of the houses in the neighborhood is maybe twice or three times as larger than this one. So what we propose is to change occupancy from one family to two-family and build a rear addition, uh, two-floor rear addition. And so that's what we are proposing, which is more in the character with the rest of the neighborhood. Uh, instead of one family becomes a two-family, um, and we have met with the neighborhood, uh, Orient Heights Neighborhood Council, which we believe majority supported it, and we have, uh, many residents of the neighborhood in the support of this project again. We met twice with Orient Heights Neighborhood Council and with, uh, neighbors nears abutters via Zoom as well. And we would like, uh, to have your support in the various of limitation of the area and, um, Boston I P A, uh, and dementia regulations. That's what we come before you and would like very much your support, thank you.
Are there questions from the board?
Question, do you have to remove any trees from the property?
No, no.
To go away, uh, this one?
No, there is no trees at this time, no, no, there is no trees, no, there is no trees at the property right here.
Thank you.
Um, the design of the parking is odd, and we don't typically see two curb cuts and two driveways surrounding a house, can you, can you speak to that?
Yes, one, the, on the left is already, it's a sheer driveway, uh, one curb cut that splits to both houses, uh, because on the other side, we just are requesting now one, uh, driveway for this house, which is on the right. The other one does exist, serves the, uh, bar, the abada on the left, and we like this one to serve to the, uh, the, uh, exist, the proposed, uh, on the right.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just, it seems to me to make more sense to consolidate all the parking on one side as opposed to have an additional driveway serving one house.
Uh, Mr. Panado, the, uh, existing deal is very small and it's actually shared with the, uh, abutters on the left. It would be very hard to put two, uh, two cars on that side, or three, that's, I mean, we show one car, but actually is the driveway on the right that are gonna be serving this proposed building.
Yeah, but,
It's two-family.
Yeah, I mean, and typically, we don't, we don't allow a curb cut just for two cars because you're taking, I assume you're taking, uh, street space, uh, public street spaces away when you make that curb cut?
I know with the city, they don't allow for one car, but usually they encouraged, uh, I think the, uh, Public Works encouraged taking two cars off the street, and that's why we proposed the two cars on the right, as per the regulation usually of Public Works.
And, and it's also, the, the driveway is also, would be on a zero lot line, it doesn't allow for the five-foot, uh, distance between the driveway and the, and the property line?
Uh, it does, I believe, okay, yes, that's why we are before you, because we have seventeen feet, we have the ground, but we have from the house to then, we have seventeen feet, and then we have some more space to the right, the five foot. But if you see on the plan, on side plan, from the house to the property line is seventeen point six.
Right, but not from the driveway, can we hear from the B P D A on this?
Mr. Hampton?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, B P D A. Uh, I wouldn't want to speak for B T D, I think, you know, I, I have been, you know, on this board enough to know that the city doesn't like, uh, two curb cuts on one piece of property, but I'll defer to B T D to confirm that. Uh, our recommendation on this was to deny without prejudice. Uh, they're creating these zoning violations with this addition, uh, they're creating the three-story addition, uh, rear yard right now, I mean, they almost cut it in half. So we think that the addition is too big, uh, and especially with the new zoning that's coming forward with, from the Plan East Boston, uh, we don't think that zoning relief should be granted because they are creating these zoning violations at their own fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stenberg, did, uh, Mr. D'Amico weigh in on this one? You're on mute, sir?
And for one twenty Saint Andrew Road, in my opinion, I do not approve a new curb cut for this project, uh, for the following reason. Uh, there, there currently is a curb cut in place allowing two cars to park. Also, there's plenty of on-street parking on both sides of this one-way street. Those are Mr. D'Amico's comments.
Thank you.
Uh, welcome.
Not yet, uh, any other questions from the board?
I, I guess the question, you know, I would throw it to the applicant, which is, um, are they open to using their existing curb cut and, you know, potentially modifying that side entry to allow for the use of the driveway for two cars, um, but not allow front, front yard parking?
That's a question to me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, yes, we are at this first of the board, if the board would rather not see, uh, the other parking, we would, we just talked, it would be better for the neighborhood to have more off-street parking, and that's, as per the size of the property, if you see, we try to stay with the same volume of the other houses. If you see through the neighborhood, and to the left or the right or on the other streets, most of the houses are actually at the size of the house with a smaller yard, and that's why we try to blend in with the rest of the neighborhood. This particular house right now, if you see, it does not blend in, and our objective is to stay with same, uh, volume of the, of the neighborhood with that. And actually, when we met with the, with the neighborhood, uh, as we present, majority of the neighbors were in favor because we showed pictures of the existing neighborhood houses, and this then we proposed, and they said, they think it's actually more in tune with the,
Thank you, thank you, Mr. De Silva, let, let's, let's take public testimony, so we can hear directly from the abutters.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mano Devia Gómez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. O N S hosted an abutters meeting for this project back in May twenty twenty-three. The applicant then met with the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council several times, and the group voted to support the project with thirty-three members in favor, nine opposed and three abstained. Unfortunately, due to personnel changes at the Office of Neighborhood Services, I do not have details on the abutters meeting held or resident comments. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Sebastian Farr from Council Colletti's office echoing Melis' comments, uh, regarding the support from Orient Heights Neighborhood Council, the, the council would like to go in support of this project as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, Councilwoman, I can support.
And I have no raised hands at the moment.
Thank you, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I, I see something in the chat from, uh, Liz Bagley that wants to speak on one twenty Saint Andrew, isn't a butter?
Okay, Liz, go ahead, sorry, and there was a raise, but at least. Thank you, I, I apologize for that, I think I just sent it directly to the chat, um, my name's Liz Bagley, I directly about Raul, and I can't, uh, I can't say what, how great a neighbor he is. His renovation of the house next to me, um, went great, uh, and one twenty has been moving with no complaints that I know of from the neighbors. Uh, I've seen the plans several times, a few with the neighborhood council, there several of our neighbors also came out in support of the renovation. Most importantly, I know just from Raul being our neighbor now, he wants to keep the integrity of the surrounding, um, aesthetics, there's no safety issues, and, um, uh, De Silva, Mr. De Silva is correct in saying what he is proposing or what he is putting in fits in much better than what is there now, so, uh, we look forward to seeing the renovations complete, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bagley. All right, with that, uh, any final questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the applicant works within the existing curb cut, and, um, and that's it.
Second.
Mr. Stenberg?
And B P D, design review, I,
Are you, is that acceptable?
I didn't put that forward, but,
I think Jeanne's asking for it.
If Jeanne, do you want me to put that forward? Um, I, I found, I found the massing fine, I found it working within the context, um, but I'll include the B P D A design review.
Mr. Collins, do you second that one?
I do.
Okay, and Mr. Stenberg?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Bedebraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Javier, is it appropriate to take a fifteen-minute break now, or just the five or six to get us to eleven?
We, we can take a fifteen-minute break, Madam Chair.
Okay, let's take a fifteen-minute,
Recording stopped.
Thank you.
Please.
Please. Thank you. I'll just do a quick roll call. Mr. Stembridge.
Present.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Present.
Ms. Weewell.
Present. I had trouble finding the mute.
No worries. Mr. Valencia.
Present.
Ms. Panado. Mr. Collins.
Here.
Ms. Panado. All right, I'll give her a minute, and in the meantime, I just want to make applicants aware, the board will briefly become a six-member board at about 1:00 p.m. and return to full board by 1:30 p.m. I just wanted to give folks that heads up. Ms. Panado, we're doing roll call. All right, turn it over to you, Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll start by, as we go into the hearing schedule for 11:00 a.m., we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this time frame.
Yes, Mr. Stembridge, it's Attorney Richard Lins, 246 Harv Street, please.
Do you listen? So that would be two cases, if I hear you correctly. The first being case BOA 1476876 with the address of 246 Harv Street. And along with that would be case BOA 1476878 with the address also being 246 Harv Street. If you would please explain.
Sure, thank you. For the record, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lins, 245 Thunder Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, we reviewed the BPDAs recommendation, and there are a number of items that we would like an opportunity to address. We think we can work to make this a better project and more in line with the requirements of planning in Boston, and specifically the comments made by the BPDAs, and therefore respectfully requesting a deferral.
What period of time are you looking for?
I think we would need, are we looking at after October 17th, Mr. Solis?
Yeah, it'd be, the next one would be October 31st or in November, which would be November 14th.
We could do October 31st, that would be ideal, please.
Does that work, Mr. Solis?
Yes.
Okay. All right, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer until October 31st.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
There are also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you very much.
Hello, this is 26 Montrose Street. We are asking for a deferment as well.
So with that, would be case BOA 1514976 with the address of 26 Montrose Street. Would you explain to the board what?
Yes, my name is Abraham Hale, the son of the owner, Befrakado Defar, who's also on the call with me as well. After speaking with Connor from the mayor's office and also talking with our architect, we think it's best for us to defer this to that November 14th date for a couple reasons. Our current submission of the design plans doesn't show the dimensions of the parking, and that was a suggestion by Connor. There also is some additional information that we would like to present, but I was unaware that it needed to be submitted seven weeks prior to this meeting, and I was informed of that yesterday by Stephanie. So with that, we respectfully ask to defer to the November 14th date.
Mr. Solis, is that work?
Yeah, that works, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer this case until November 14th.
May I have a second? Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then. Thank you.
Hearing no more requests for withdrawals and deferrals. We'll move on to, into the 11:00 a.m. hearings. Next, the first will be case BOA 1501918 with the address of 40-42 Fowler Street. The applicant and/or the representative present will explain.
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCasse, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant and owner of this property, 40-42 Fowler Street in Dorchester. The application before you is a request to change the occupancy from two-family, three-family, and to otherwise renovate this property. It has been taxed as a three-family since at least 1985, and my search of the historical records at ISD indicates that there are these two building permits. One was issued in July of 1968, which identifies the property as a three-family dwelling, and another one in August of 1984, which identifies the property as a three-family dwelling. That's how the records of ISD still reflect it as a two-family. So we're formally making the request to change it from 2F to 3F, which is consistent with this zoning sub-district, which is a 3F 5,000 sub-district. So the proposed use as 3F is not only historical use, but consistent with the zoning, and no relief is required on that item. The items for zoning relief include off-street parking insufficient. Since we're technically adding one unit, we would need to have a parking space for that. But with the Google Street View of this street, you'll see that these houses don't have driveways, and there's no opportunity to create parking for the confirmed third unit. Additional lot area is insufficient, is an existing condition, and there's no change to the footprint or no other changes to the building other than completely renovating it. And the last item is usable open space insufficient. If you see on the site plan before you, where it says lot area 2902, that's actually part of. that's actually part of the existing parcel. There's sort of a little backyard area that jogs off where the existing dwelling is located and that will remain open space as it, as it currently is. And each of the units have, uh, front porches and side porches. Um, it's a sort of modified triple-decker kind of looking building. My client acquired this, um, through a foreclosure auction. The building is, uh, prior to that was abandoned and is in need of lots of TLC and upgrading, which is what, um, this proposal is aimed at doing. I think with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lins. Any questions from the Board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'm Ashley Gold from the Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office took hold, uh, meeting 442 Fowler Street on August 3rd. Um, about one other person presents, uh, no concerns of, um, anything of opposition or support since they was already confirmed and was already there. Uh, with that, we defer to the Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Aymeric Almewa, the Office of City Council, Brian Moorewell. And in regards to the project, having received, um, letters of support from the Abutting Civic, Ari Ellington, and no formal letters of opposition, the Council would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no additional ways to answer. Thanks.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Uh, I'm just gonna make a motion for approval.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1513689 with the address of 135 William T. Morrissey Boulevard. It's the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
Uh, yes, this is Jennifer Schultz and I am permitting counsel on behalf of the owner and applicant Beacon Capital. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Just started with that. Thank you. Um, so we are here to ask for, um, uh, conditional use permits in order to allow for the Massachusetts Biotech Council to operate its Bioversity, which is going to be, um, begin as an approximately 3,000 to 4,000 square foot space within the old Boston Globe Building at 135 Morrissey Boulevard. Uh, it will be a life science workforce training center for, um, high school, holders of high school degrees or the equivalent GED in order to obtain stackable certificates, in order to, um, obtain a career in life sciences uh, and work their way up and potentially with other operators and tenants in the large building. And so, uh, when this property first went through its initial redevelopment in 2018 and 2019, um, they received, um, a series of, uh, variances in conditional use permits, but did not have tenants in place for the building. That was to support a core and shell renovation. And now that tenants are interested in particular spaces in the building, such as this Bioversity program, um, we are back to request additional zoning relief in order to support what we think is an important use in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Ross Cochrane, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed their community process. Our office was not required to host a meeting for this proj, uh, no butters meeting, excuse me, for this project. However, the local civic association voted in support. At this time, we'd like to defer to the Board's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, joining the current City Council, Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Ross Sullivan, City Council, ask Michael Flaherty, Councilor, record in support.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have no ways to answer. Thank you.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion? Motion to approve. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck. Very much. And Mr. Salas, I'm guessing we need another break?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. We'll see you all back at 11:30.
Recording stopped. In the meantime, if anyone's in the attendee section right now, but they need to be elevated.
Okay, uh, do I need to do roll call again?
Uh, yeah, I would do it just to be safe.
Sounds good. Mr. Stenbridge.
Present, Madam Chair.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Present.
Ms. Weewell.
Present.
Mr. Valencia.
Present.
Ms. Panado.
Present.
Mr. Collins.
Present.
Excellent. I will turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And before we begin with the recommendations for 11:30 a.m., uh, we'll ask if there are any, uh, requests for withdrawals or deferrals, um, from this, from this timeframe?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, Attorney Richard Linds. I have, uh, two that I'll be deferring. Make it a nice short date for everyone, hopefully.
Okay, and what were those, please?
The first one is eighty-one Woodlawn.
Towards the end, Mr. Stenbridge, the eleven thirties.
I apologize, folks.
It's going towards the end, yeah?
Ah, ah, thank you, folks. Uh, that would be case BOA-1341023, with the address of eighty-one Woodlawn Street. Um, would you, would you please explain?
Sure. Uh, for the record, again, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Linds, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston, behalf of the petitioner. Uh, Madam Chair, we deferred last time. Uh, there was a, a notice correction issue that needed to be addressed, uh, which has been corrected. Um, however, we did, uh, receive the BPDAs recommendation on this, uh, and we noted that there were some, uh, additional items that they were requesting, uh, which were relatively newer based upon our previous conversations with them. Um, we think we can address those as well, and we'd like, uh, further opportunity to do so. So we're hoping, uh, we could, uh, possibly get this on for October thirty-first as well, seeing that I'm already scheduled for that date.
Mr. Solis?
Uh, Madam Chair, yeah, we can squeeze in that one. I think we, yeah.
Go ahead, thanks.
Okay, that's fine. No good deed goes unpunished. Short today, long then. Uh, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer this case until October thirty-first?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
There are also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you. And the next one I have is seventy-four Horace Street. Um, I probably should have did that one first, knowing the, um, timeline here, um, unless I'm able to squeeze that one last one up October thirty-first as well.
Um, with that, we'll be referring to case BOA-1459061, with the address of seventy-four Horace Street. Go ahead, Mr. Solis.
Thank you again for the record, Richard Linds, uh, on behalf of the petitioner, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston. Uh, again, very similar situation. Um, this one, uh, relative to plan East Boston, some of the recommendations that are being, uh, put forth by the BPDAs relative to the potential new zoning that will be, uh, adopted hopefully in the near future. Uh, we feel that we've made a number of changes, but, uh, there's a little bit more that the BPDAs looking for, we believe, and we think we can address that. So respectfully requesting for a referral on this one as well.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, I think, uh, unfortunately, I think October thirty-first is getting full now. I think we have to do November fourteenth then.
I, yeah, I'm not gonna be available on November fourteenth, so I apologize for that one. We'll have a next available.
I'll leave it to you, Madam Chair. If you want to put it to October thirteenth, the ne- uh, thirty-first, I'm sorry, October thirty-first.
I cannot. Is there a later date?
The next available day would be November twenty-eighth.
Mr. Linds?
I'll have to work. Thank you.
All right. May I have a motion?
Motion to defer this case to November twenty-eighth?
May I have a second? Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Bedebraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Stenbridge, two twenty-nine dash two thirty-three Bowden Street?
Hmm, that would be case BOA-1484717, with the address of two twenty-nine to two thirty-three Bowden Street. Uh, thank you. Would you explain, please?
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, at a business address of fifty-one Dobson Road. We're here seeking a deferral on this matter as we need to go back and meet with the Bowden, Geneva Main Streets in October.
Okay. Javier?
Uh.
I think you said November fourteenth?
November fourteenth, yes, Madam Chair.
November fourteenth works, bros.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer to, um, November fourteenth.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. P- Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
I picked the right day to take over his chair at one o'clock.
Wow, looks like we're gonna have another break. That's a really long one. Okay.
Uh, I have one, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Oh, boy.
Forty-three dash forty-five Stanton Street.
Hmm, Stanton.
Okay, that's the second case on the eleven thirties.
Uh, and that would be case BOA-1443137, the address of forty-three to forty-five Stanton Street. Yes, would you explain, please?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark LaCass, LaCass Law, seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston. Um, this project is a redevelopment of a former convent on part of a larger church property that has been closed for some time. Um, another developer is doing the church and other portions of the property. My client is doing just the convent. Um, but the Neighborhood Association, Redefining Our Community, R O C, and a group of Stanton Street neighbors has requested, um, further engagement with us and the other developer, and we're continuing those efforts. So we request a deferral, and the November fourteen date, if still available, would be perfect.
Yes, Madam Chair, that's still available.
Okay, may I have a motion?
That would be a motion to defer this case to November fourteen?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you so much.
Okay, oh, you have another one?
Uh, no, well, I will. I just wanna just alert the board, uh, just for planning purposes. The one o'clock interpretation, uh, is my matter. I had actually spoken to, um, Mr. Solis about that, and we're gonna be deferring. I know you need to call it at one o'clock, but just, I know you were dealing with a six-member board issue, but we'll be deferring that, uh, as well, because that may, that matter may resolve itself.
Got it. Ms. Panado is so lucky stepping in at this time, huh?
Nothing to do with Ms. Panado as chair, of course, but we'll be.
I know, I'm feeling like.
Feeling the love. Uh, all right, well, that, that leaves us with just a few eleven thirties plus our recommendations. Mr. Stenbridge?
I would like to, uh.
Is there another one?
Yes, good morning. My name is Clayton West. I'm, uh, seventy-five Maywood Street.
Okay.
I would like to request a deferral till November.
Okay, Mr. Um, Stenbridge, can you read that into the record?
That would be case BOA-1309386, with the address of seventy-five Maywood Street. Uh, would you, would you speak to that, please?
Uh, so, um, I'm not sure if you recall, but in about June, uh, uh, an issue had come up when we was in front of the board, and, and then since then, a new plan examiner has been put in place, and, um, the communication has been a little challenging, so just trying to just work through a couple of things. But for the most part, we think we presented everything that we needed, but just want to reassure that before we come back in front of the board.
Okay, Javier?
Uh, yes, we can do November twenty-eighth for this one, Madam Chair.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer this ki- case to, uh, November twenty-eighth?
May I have a second?
Here comes.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
There are also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Right, right, right.
Okay. Anything else? All right, Mr. Stenbridge?
With that, Madam Chair, we'll return to the recommendations for scheduled for eleven thirty a.m. I will read them into the record, um, read the case and the action for them, and then we will vote, um, all together on all of them. Run vote. We begin with case BOA-1497572. It was approved with BPDAs design, design review. Next, we have case BOA-1466435, with the address of eight eighty-nine Dorchester Avenue. That was approved. Then we have case BOA-1491061, with the address of ten East Cottage Street. That was approved. Next, we have case BOA-1468501, with the address of fifty-five Menadnock Street. That was approved with BPDAs design review. Uh, next, we have case BOA-1483184. I, mm, Jesus Christ. I apologize there. Uh.
Okay. Take your time.
Uh, oh, let me start. Case BOA-1468501, with fifty-five Menadnock Street. That was approved, approved BPDAs, BPDAs design review. Okay. Case BOA-1483184, with the address of eighty Pleasant Street, which was approved. Next, we have case BOA-1484588, with the address of forty-seven to forty-nine Owen Croft Road. That was approved. Go on to case BOA-1428568, the address of eighty-four one hundred River Street. That was deferred to November ninth. Next, we have case BOA-1502177, with the address of thirty-two Augustus Avenue. That was approved with BPDAs design review. Next, we have case BOA-1441910, with the address of twenty-five Neeling Crescent. That was approved. Next, we have case BOA-1496409, with the address of thirty-eight Sycamore Street. That was approved with BPDAs design review. Next, we have case BOA-1492359, with the address of twenty-five Oriole Street. And that was approved with two tandem spaces for the project. Next, we have case BOA-1492091, with the address of three Ardmore Road. That was approved with BPDAs design review. Next, we have case BOA-1480464, with the address of forty-four Blanford Road. That wa- oh, sorry, forty-four Blendford Road. That was approved with no building code relief. Next, we have case BOA-1448246, with the address of twenty-four Common Street. That was deferred till November fourteenth. Next, we have, next and last in this category, we have case BOA-1033851, with the address of thirty-five Washington Street. That case was approved. And that is all we have for the recommendations at the time.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve recommendations from the committee.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
We'll move on to the re-discussions scheduled for eleven thirty a.m. I think we've heard of all the withdrawals and deferral in this timeframe. So moving on, we will start with case BOA-1461525, with the address of forty-eight Torrey Street. Is the applicant and, and are they represented present to explain?
Yes.
Please?
Please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Um, first off, um, my name is Edward Gata. I am the developer of record on this project, and I will be presenting with our architect, Chris Johns, of Thoughtcraft Architects. Um, and, you know, this, this presentation was to outline all the benefits and, uh, details of the project, where I'm gonna let Chris kinda dive a little bit more into the details. But if we start at the, at the top, we all know we're forty-eight dash, so technically, the project, and I'm excited to present, is at forty-eight dash fifty-four Torrey Street, technically. Uh, an address was created for this, and our, um, main goals for this project, if we can go to the third slide on this presentation, scroll up just a little bit. Um, this, this project is going to be for a homeownership scheme, which is going to consist of fourteen market rate, or, uh, fourteen, um, condominiums, which are twelve market rate and two affordable units, um, going along with, um, BPDAs and Boston guidelines, where we have six one bedrooms, four two bedrooms, and four three bedrooms, um, totaling in fourteen units. So the, the goal for this project is to create and provide the best, highest-quality living scenarios with green and, uh, rejuvenation, uh, solar, renewable aspects of construction and building intertwined. So we're targeting our passive house building standards as much as we possibly can with high-performing windows, doors, uh, management of solar energy, which we've already started to, um, get performers in schematics for, um, creating an airtight envelope, balanced ventilation, which go along with some of the new, uh, building codes, and, um, looking into or a hundred percent creating an all-electric-powered building, um, appliances and providing, uh, charging ports for vehicles in our, uh, on our parking, uh, at-grade lot. So the quality of living will bring in some private outdoor space for every single unit, which was not in there at the first iteration. Um, design of emphasis on natural light, which is why we're focused on the high, high-performing windows and doors to maximize the size of those windows and doors, um, to bring in that natural light. Uh, shared communal outdoor space, which will be on the ground level. Um, accessible units, which leads us into incorporating a elevator. Um, and high-quality finishes, appliances, uh, private mail, and one of my favorites is the bike storage for, one bike storage for every unit that we create. And just a glimpse of community benefits would be essentially replacing a vastly under, underutilized lot, uh, actually, pair of lots. So both of these, uh, forty-eight and fifty-four Torrey Street, um, consist of seventeen, um, car parking bays, of which, uh, there are three buildings, five bays in one, uh, ten in another, and two in the, in the one in the front. And, um, some are dilapidated, unusable, and haven't been used for a number of years by the, uh, previous owners. Um, so, along, along with community benefits, we've been designing this building essentially for eight to nine months um, since, uh, talks with the family, previous owners, and, um, we've incorporated the, the neighborhood community, uh, from the get-go, from the concept design, uh, two to three privately-held meetings with the leaders of the community, and then three full community, uh, meetings where I presented each iteration. This is probably about the seventh iteration, which you guys have, uh, probably reviewed already. Um, so with that, we're incorporating new trees on site with a full landscape design plan, um, after gaining some variance relief, and, um, street and sidewalk improvements, which also consist of removing a curb cut and moving our access to, uh, pretty close to the lot line on the right-hand side of the building. But this gives back a public parking space for our access to the building. And addition, yeah, essentially addition of one on-street parking, removal of the existing curb cut, actually, uh, making it smaller as well. So if we can go down, uh, to the next slide, please. Uh, this is just a location map, uh, where forty-eight dash fifty, it should be fifty-four Torrey Street, uh, my apologies. But right next to Dorchester High School, um, you know, with the beautiful park, about ten, fifteen-minute walk to, uh, most necessities, or, you know, very easily, uh, very easy transportation to wherever you need to go along the Washington Street, up into the city, et cetera. Um, if we can go down one more slide. And this outlines essentially what is existing on the property, and these are broken into the two parcels with the smaller garages on one parcel and the longer garage on the right on the second parcel. We are combining the two and removing and demolishing, uh, what is there currently. So, uh, the curb cut on the left will, actually, both curb cuts currently will be removed, renovated, renovating the sidewalk, improving the sidewalk, and moving the curb cut to where the location of the long garage, uh, exists currently. So, um, we're, we're trying to give back public spaces, and, you know, i- if you've seen the curbs there now, um, it would be very much needed. So, if we could go down another slide, please. This is the site plan, um, that we are going to propose. So if you wanna zoom in a little bit, um, on this iteration, after, uh, a number of BPDAs and, uh, butters meetings, we've incorporated almost all feedback that we possibly could into the final iteration of this project, uh, where we've now had a, a single-lane driveway into a side entrance for screen parking. So this is technically open-air at-grade parking uh, with the mechanicals lobby, bike storage, and mailroom up, up at the front with a staircase and the elevator, and a secondary egress staircase, um, midway down on the left, on, on the right-hand side of the building. Um, and the screen parking will have seven, uh, compact spaces, and, um, one handicap, uh, this is where our trash containment area will be, which we've essentially ta- taken over a parking space, the square footage of apartment space, um, to keep it contained, not outside, not in eyesore for neighbors, or create any, um, pest issues down the line, which opens up our commu- communal space on the left-hand side of the building, an open space. Um, about three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty-six square feet added to the open space that we can provide for this, for the community, um, that's going to be living in the building. And, uh, you know, if they make friends with their neighbors, great, have them over to the, to this common space, um, which will be finished and, um, landscaped accordingly. Um, if we can go down another slide, please, uh, and zoom in a little bit. So these are the variances that we are requesting, uh, relief for, um, which consist of the floor area ratio, which is, uh, one point six six. I'm gonna look at it on my screen. Um, currently, for FAR, um, the building height in stories, um, and, and feet, which is actually after numerous studies with the block and in, on the street in the neighborhood, we're actually not higher than any other building in the area. Uh, we're just in line at forty-two feet, uh, with a building about three doors down. So we're not trying to overbear any of the neighborhood. The front yard minimum depth is also. The front yard minimum depth is also based on a study that we've done with the block and the distance that most other homes on this street are at currently. Eight to about seven, seven to 10 feet is somewhat of what we were looking at. But in, on this particular block, we are overwhelmingly within that eight feet and almost all the other single families and multifamilies on that street are at the eight-foot mark. The side yard minimum, which is on the refusal letter, was alleviated. We removed that variance requirement by shortening our balconies on the left-hand side of the building, which is where the variance was coming into play. So, we've removed that from this sheet. The rear yard minimum depth variance required was just to create enough parking for condominium units. Every condominium most likely will want a parking space, but we were working with BPDA on minimizing that as much as possible. And this is where we are at, especially with the parking spaces per unit at the .86, which was a comment from BPDA about reducing spaces, increasing compact spaces. And in doing so, that's where we are at now with 12 parking spaces for the 14 units. And that's just to kind of glance at the variances that we are requesting relief for. If we could go scroll down a little bit more. Chris, if you would go into the studies of this and how we are really trying to mesh in with the neighborhood from what you and the team did, that'd be great.
Sure, happy to do so. Chris Johns, Thoughtcraft Architects. So, yeah, as Ed laid out here, we are, we're a three-story building at the front, total of four stories, where we pull the fourth floor back in further alignment with some of the upper stories or roof lines of buildings along the street. And then we've, we've kind of split the building in two to, again, to kind of recall the proportions of the structures that marched down Torrey Street. We'll go next. And so, the kind of building, looking at the triple decker typology and, you know, this notion of, a goal of ours is to try to provide private outdoor space for each unit. And we know it's, it's kind of a ubiquitous thing with, in Dorchester with the triple deckers. And so, to achieve that in a multifamily building is no small feat. And I think it's, from what we're hearing in the market and, you know, given what we've gone through in the last three years with COVID, I think people are really appreciating having their own, their own space, their ability to step outside and get fresh air. And so, you know, again, this reinforces the environmental bend to this project and really trying to make a high-quality environmentally friendly project next. And so, we don't think just about the exterior. I think it's, it's important to think about the actual homes that we're providing. And so, those outdoor spaces become really critical to the quality of the units and the amount of glazing and daylighting that they afford. To go next. And this is just kind of a final rendering here from across the street, looking at our, our new driveway entrance on the right and turning into the screen parking beneath the building. The lobby and entrance are on the left first floor. And then you can see kind of the three stories as presented along the street edge with the fourth floor pulled back considerably where it's virtually out of view even when you come back as far as across the street at a neighboring house. So, I think that's all we have. With that, we'll take any questions or comments?
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
What's on that ground floor? Is that, is that a residential unit or a retail with all the glazing?
Yep, so the ground floor unit is gonna, I mean, the ground floor plate is actually going to be the at-grade parking in the back.
Oh, that's the parking. No, I got you.
And the front is actually where that, where the window glazing is, is going to be the bike storage, the lobby, and the mailroom. And behind where the numbers are on the front of the building is going to be the mechanical room with no windows.
Are any, are any of these units affordable? You have 14 units.
Yes, we're accounting for, we're accounting for two units.
Two units, okay. I didn't catch that. Thank you.
Yep.
At what area be it income?
We haven't established that with housing, but based on what we're hearing, the averages are between 70 and 80.
Thanks.
That's what we would estimate, actually negotiating with the housing, housing authority.
Other questions from?
One question. I'm looking at parking spaces six and seven. Have those been reviewed for maneuverability in the garage?
Six and seven.
Can you scroll up to the site plan, please?
So, we might have to do some, you know, three-point turning, but in order to continue on with this, we needed to add some parking. We have not done a full-on maneuverability study yet. But based on what I've seen in other buildings, especially in East Boston, where I'm also a real estate broker, we've seen very, very similar layouts. And with the distance between parking spaces, right, so it's, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's about 20 feet. So, between the rear of one car to the rear of another car would be about 20 feet, and that should be more than enough room to safely back out of a space and, and turn to leave the lot.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ross Cochrane with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed their community process. Our office held an abutters meeting in May of this year that was well-attended with suggestions on green space and concerns over the project, but with little to no opposition. The proponents have met with the local civic group a handful of times, but to my knowledge, there's no layer of support or opposition on file. At this time, we'd like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ross, I just do have a question about that because I did receive community letter of support, which is attached to our file along with two other abutter letters of support.
Is it, is it on file with the ZBA?
It should, yeah, yeah. I've gotten confirmation from a number of people saying it was attached.
So, if I may speak, please, we can copy that.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Io from the Office of City Council, Brian Orell. In regards to 48 Torrey Street, we did receive a letter of support from the abutting civic, as well as those two letters of support from abutting neighborhood residents, and we would like to also with the civic and go on record in support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no additional reasons. Right. Any additional questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve with BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Thank you.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Betterfrazo?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Pannato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1513036, the address of 25 Cobrook Street. Is the applicant and/or their resident, representative present to explain?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher, business, Cicely Tix architect with business address 1156 Dorchester Ave. I'm joined by the owner, Ben Ford, and my senior architect, William Christopher, who will present the plans. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing us. We have, we have a project here proposed for you, before you, is a three-story, single residential unit on Cobrook Street, which is a side street in South Boston. The zoning violations are FAR, the required FAR is two, we're at 2.4, and the yards effects are pre-existing conditions due to, is an existing basement foundation at the block that's used for storage. So, as, as we go through the building, basically, we go through the slides. This is a contextual sign showing the location of the property as it fronts on, onto Cobrook Street. The next slide is elevation of the, no, please go down one, please. Get that one. That shows the existing foundation. That's the place that we're going to be building directly on top of. The next slide is a picture of Cobrook Street looking east. The site is on the right-hand side there, the white cars is on the site. The next slide is showing the adjacent areas around the site. This is a private way, and part of the street is not paved as we, as we go down. Next is the existing slash proposed site plan that shows the existing building as well as all of the drainage situations. There is an onsite drainage system that handles all the overflow and groundwater. The next slide is, is the full book proposed that shows the deck on the, on the third level. So, next is the first floor plan that shows tandem parking spaces for two cars. Cobrook Street is to your left. The yellow area is the entrance area that has a stair up to the living area. There is also a personal lift that's being installed through it. And then behind that is a storage area. On the second floor are the two bedrooms. As you come up the lift or the stair, there's the master bedroom to the right with, with the deck and the plaza, the bathroom. To the left is a single bedroom with a public bathroom attached as well. Then on the third floor is where we have our living area, where we have, you know, our kitchen dining room, living area, half bath with support, as well as an open deck off the back of the building facing towards the bay. Next slide is a listing of all the abutters and showing also the footprint of, of our building. Next is the elevations. On the left-hand side is, is the rear elevation of the building with the first floor is really at grade with the basement below that. On the left is, is the right-side elevation that's showing, again, the three-story, the first story being the parking area, so there's, there's no windows there. And then the bedroom and, and the living area as illustrated. The next slide shows the front of the building, on the left-hand side, garage door, two person, personnel doors to get out of the building. The building will be fully sprinkled, and the only gas going to be brought into the building is a gas line, so that they could legally put a grill on their deck. Would have to be hot-hyped to notify the city to accept that. Next is a section that illustrates the volume and basic size of the building and how it lays out. And then finally, we've got three-dimensional imaging that shows the context of the building. That's the building in the front there as, as we proposed it. In the final slide are two illustrations of contextually how the building sits and fits within the fabric of this neighborhood in South Boston. If there are questions, I'll gladly respond.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
What are the required side yard setback?
I'm sorry?
What are the required side yard setback?
Side yard setbacks require a three feet.
And what do you have?
From a foot to 11 inches. As I say, that's a pre-existing condition.
Was this property originally one full property that was 464 East Seventh Street? And are you dividing that property?
No, we're not subdividing.
So, it's its own property? Because I'm looking at yours, at the zoning viewer, and it's acknowledging 25 Cobrook as just one full property under the address of 464 East Seventh Street. So, I just wanted clarification.
Well, thanks, thanks for our survey. You can see that they are deeded separate properties and that this property stands alone. It's not part of any subdivision without looking for a subdivision.
This project had been before the board previously to construct the parking deck and basement foundation as well.
So, this is just a note to my board members. Even, even though the, the garage parking structure is almost, it's kind of an interesting topography, and it's almost like at level, and, and there's a level below it. My, my concern is that you're building upright to the property line and you're showing windows. And typically, windows are to be located five feet from the property line. So, my concern, my concern is just the rights of your, like, your abutters and their ability and their ability to build up. So, I'm just putting that as an observation to my colleagues.
And just, just so you know, we're not asking for any building cord relief. So, we're working, we'll be working with the 15% unprotected openings that are allowed between three to five feet for the building.
Okay, other questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. ONS hosted an abutters meeting for 25 Cobrook Street on November 30th of 2022. Over 20 abutters were in attendance that meeting. Many concerns and questions were, and shadow impact, the size of the projects.
Sorry, Mr. Newman, you got cut off for a short period. Could you start over?
Okay, sure. So, the abutters meeting on November 30th, 20 abutters were in attendance. Concerns and questions were raised around drainage, shadows, the size of the project, and utilities. ONS has received over a dozen letters of opposition, including one from the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, which took issue with the height, feeling this would have a significant impact on the character of the neighborhood. Residents in the abutters were also concerned about Cobrook being an unpaved private way and how that would impact water and sewer access and drainage issues that already exist, as well as emergency vehicle access. We also, I want to note that we received three letters of support as well, which the board should have access to. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
If I could respond?
Can I, can I please let public testimony finish, then you can respond? No, we'll go to Anna and then Aaron. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Canderon from Council President Fling's office. The council would like to go on record in opposition based on feedback through the community process from neighbors and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, who also submitted an opposition letter to the board in recent days. Neighbors called attention to the height being inconsistent with the character of the surrounding community and the last size being below the minimum to build on. Moreover, this is an arrow on paved way, and neighbors have expressed serious concerns, not only about quality of life during the construction phase, but more importantly, the logistics of where vehicles and staging will go, and therefore be assessed in period for the first responders in the event of emergency. Thank you.
Amanda?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan for City Council Lodge, Michael Clarity echoing the sentiments of Council President Fling's office, as well as lowering the violations under Article 68, outside of the law in opposition.
Amanda?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Amanda O'Connor from Senator Collins' office. The senator would like to go on record in opposition of this project.
Okay, then. Good action from you, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kate Stapleton from Council Marby's office. Throughout the community process, the project received little to no support from direct abutters. And because of that, the council would like to go on record in opposition. Thank you.
But Erin?
Hi, this is Erin Claywell, one of the owners of 464 East Seventh and a direct abutter. We've submitted letters in opposition, and so we'll let those stand. But wanted to clarify that 464 is actually the direct abutters and is not a part of 25 Cobrook as far as any legally existing law to our, to our understanding.
Thank you.
All right. I have no additional raised hands. Thank you.
Okay, would the applicant like to address those comments?
Sure. As far as utilities, though, this is a private street. There would be the extension of utilities out into the road. Whether it's paved or not would not be an issue. The drainage, as I said, we have a complex system. We actually have videos that we've supported around their rainstorms. And this site is the only site on Cobrook right now that has its own retention system that's in operation and working right now. As far as shadows, though, this building is north of the majority of the houses. There would have any impact. The lot to the right, which right now is a concrete lot, vacant lot, that would be building lot that would be impacted by shadows. And that would be impacted whether it was a one-story building or not. Staging, the owner of this property has assurances from one of the, a buddy named, that they would be able to use their area as a lay-in to support this area. As far as the height of this building goes, this is well below the zoning requirement of Article 68 in that, you know, this is following the South Boston zoning guidelines. But I think that was, that's what I would go with.
Okay, thank you. And I know these folks haven't raised their hand, but in the chat, there are two people who, well, one of them may have spoken, who are on the record in opposition. Just want to make sure that's clear. Any other questions from the board?
Can we hear from the BPDA on this one?
Mr. Hampton, are you available? I don't know if he's available. Was there anything specific you wanted to ask?
Just that they are recommending approval with design review.
Maybe, yes. Any other questions? Well, is Mr. Hampton available? I'll give one more chance. I don't hear him, so any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve with BPDA review with a special attention to increasing the open space, usable open space and attention to the windows on the left side of the project.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Better Brazza?
I'm going to go on record of no due to the side yard, not having sufficient side yard setback and hearing the opposition for the project.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
The chair also votes no, but the motion carries. Okay, I think we have a break again until 1:00. And as a reminder to the 1:00 applicants, it will become a six-member board for about 30 minutes, which may be the duration of the hearing, I don't know. So Ms. Panado will be filling in as chair while I am the member who needs to step away. Thank you. See you guys, well, be back at 1:00.
Recording stopped.